It's gonna be fun, because I get to be chair for like five minutes. I'm gonna use more of my five minutes reading this ridiculous thing. As Chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members in person anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. School committee members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mary Branley, Hillary Griffiths.
Not yet.
Uh, Mara Hogan.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
Yeah.
Alexis Fishbone.
Yes.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Colleen Andrade.
Yes.
Chuck Karajanis.
Yes.
Wayne White.
Yes.
And other important people who are attending would be Chris Blake. Andy Noddy.
Nick.
And Nick Kane.
Nikki, Nikki, can I do yourself? Can you hear us next?
Yes, I can. There we go.
There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, this open meeting in the Maynard School Committee is being conducted as a hybrid meeting as allowed by Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, signed into law by Governor Healy on March twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-three. This act continues to exempt certain provisions under open meeting law regarding remote meetings and public access until March thirty first, two thousand twenty-five. This committee is convening via Zoom and in person, as posted on the district's website. While an option for remote attendance and or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technical problems interrupt the virtual broadcast to remote attendees unless otherwise required by law. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Accordingly, be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording, which is audible, audible to and viewable by the public. If you are planning to record or broadcast this meeting, please use the raise your hand function now to notify the chairs required by law. Okay. Meeting materials, along with the agenda, most of tonight's meeting materials are available on the Maynard Public Schools website in a folder titled Twenty Twenty Four, Twenty Twenty Five Agendas, under the tab School Committee. This public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda and documents unless the chair notes otherwise. The public comments agenda item is a devoted time for the school committee to hear from the public. As such, it is its structure primarily supports a unidirectional reporting of public comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. Here are the general rules for for any form of public comment, period. One, any person wishing to speak and make a comment during a virtual meeting, they do so by sign up to speak publicly in advance and up until the public comment agenda item at da-da-da-da-da. Please have your Zoom name match so we may able to unmute you to speak. Be all public comments are limited to three minutes to ensure that everyone who wishes to comment has the opportunity to be heard, and no person may comment more than once without permission of the chair. As time allows, the chair could consider allowing a person to comment second time, especially if it is related to a topic that has not yet been brought up. Any person wishing to submit written comments to be read by the chair may do so. You can email them in advance up until the public comment agenda items to comments for SC meeting at maynard.k12.ma.us. The subject line must state public comment. Please include your first and last name and your town to ensure your comments are read. Comments will only be read for three minutes. If the submitted comments are longer, they will be suspended at the three minute mark. To ensure all comments can be read in their entirety, it is suggested that you keep them to approximately three hundred and fifty words. However, submitted comments longer than three hundred and three hundred and fifty words will be included in the public record in their entirety. Note, anyone wishing to submit a comment to the public record to the public comment comments agenda has passed. Do so by emailing comments to comments for SC meeting at maynard.k12.ma.us up until the end of the meeting, specifically stating their desire to have these additional comments included. Meeting ground rules. Before we go to the first item on the agenda, to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and ensure accurate meeting minutes. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. I'll ask each member if they have any comments, questions, or motions that they would like to make. I will go through the members for additional comments or questions if time allows. Please hold off speaking until your name is called and remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. If members wish to engage with other members, please do do so through the chair and take care not to interrupt anyone who is speaking. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting must be conducted by a roll call vote, since all members are not in person. Before we move on to the first item on the agenda, and without objection, I'd like to call the school committee meeting to order at seven oh five.
Good job.
Awesome.
And with that, we will take nominations, because we are about to do our annual reorganization of the school committee first, and then we'll get down to other business. Nomination or chair.
How about you do it? I'd like to nominate Natasha Rivera for chair.
Second. Second, any discussion?
Um, thank you.
Vote?
Yes.
Uh, oh, Mary Branley.
Um, I don't need to be a roll call for this, because all four members are here in person and no one is online. Okay. We can just.
Raise it.
Just raise that hand.
Okay, that's.
So all four.
Uh. Vice Chair. Oh, no, done.
Let's nominate Mara Hogan as Vice Chair towards school committee. Second. Okay, any discussion? Under the nominations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We've made a great team, thank you. Um, Mary is always the work for me behind the scene as well, so it's not, it's really a shared. It is. All shared, yes. Um, all right, so any further discussion? Call, or actually Hillary's not joined, so we can just do raise your hands. Okay, yes. All right. So I think we haven't really talked to you about subcommittees or anything yet. So I think at this point, probably just think about our subcommittees that we were looking to do for um, next year. I think the primary ones we probably like, the budget is still gonna be a necessary one. The policy is still gonna be a necessary one. Um, but I would like to figure out how we can make that more effective, the strategic planning.
Pretty effective this past year. Thanks in a lot of spot to Elizabeth, but yeah.
Well, I go around the superintendent evaluation.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, we can just do that. How about if we um, do um, the spreadsheet and ask people which one they would like to do?
Yeah, I think we did. I just wanted to think about before we did like some ideas if everyone is comfortable with the ones that we did last year. We had also the, we had the, we did a negotiation, but we don't have a, yeah, the personnel, we didn't have a lot of um, negotiations was coming here. We had a lot more last year.
I'm coming.
We have.
What do we have?
Right.
One this year, one next year.
Oh, one.
We have this year.
What do we have there?
Professionals coming.
That's coming.
And then we'll have secretaries.
She's, yeah, we just did that.
I, I was just thinking the same thing. We did about three years ago.
What we know, um. DEI, but Elizabeth said she's going to help with that, right? She says yours.
My recommendation, we that we maintain our DEI committee, and one of them, one of the school committee members and Elizabeth, it doesn't matter, he participates in that as opposed to making it a separate.
Sounds perfect.
Yeah. Yeah, I want to make sure we get Hillary's feedback on that too, because I wasn't part of it last year, and I know she was.
No, she was not.
But she wasn't?
Didn't attend. Elizabeth did.
Okay.
That, which is why I think you maintain it, and you're all, one of you is always invited.
Okay, okay. Um, I think that we also had, you know, just to add, we, we kind of made our, like the fields task force, that was one that has was, you know, kind of, Colleen had gone to a couple of those as well. I've gone to those. Uh, Mike had had joined a lot of those. So we do have some of those, I think, ad hoc ones that come up when the need presents a little bit. Um, the budget subcommittee for the town, that is one that we'll probably have a standing one for, so um, we can think about if we want to just kind of stick with that, or if we wanna, how we want to do that. Um, did you have questions about, or do you have any thoughts on any subcommittees? I'm just curious.
We don't know.
That might be.
I don't know them all, and it probably, I'm not sure I want to do policy, because I write policy every day, so I'm not sure.
I would still like to do that, and I'm pretty sure Hillary also will, so. You guys have a, you guys just like that, a good groove, because I feel like it's, you know, it's working, so.
Great.
Um, so maybe we can talk a little bit on about like what they do, the frequency of, you know, huffing the ones that we currently do, and if there's anything that comes to mind that you are interested in.
Okay.
Um, that you feel like need more attention from the school committee, we can um, maybe revisit this at another school committee meeting. When Hillary's also available too.
So we'll start by sending out.
Um.
Do you have that?
I have it right here.
Yeah.
And I will, yeah, I can, this is la, the last times, because we didn't change it from like.
Right, right.
Two years ago, so I'll um, I'll clean it up and.
F one twenty-five tab and then.
Perfect. Okay.
It's a good start.
That would be great. Um, and then liaison appointments, um. I don't know if we want to stick with, it's Elizabeth. I wonder if she really did a lot of liaisoning, uh, or.
Well, what we have uh, for liaisons right now on here is Green Meadow Building Committee.
Which.
Town Budget Thump Com, um, Town Charter Review, which is done.
Done.
Um, Master Plan Implementation is also not happening.
Not happening.
It's not happening. Um, Art Space is.
I think I could scratch that.
Yeah.
I don't know if there is.
Wellness.
Yep.
Safety.
Yep, I'll do those two again.
Um, Boris Luckman, FINCOM, CPAC, and then we have a whole bunch of other ones, CPC, Capital Planning, Recreation Committee, Human Relations Committee, Sustainability Committee, Boys and Girls Club, Library, uh, and then the three buildings, um, School Council and PTOs.
Okay.
Um, Alexis is like, when did I sign up?
Wait, not, a lot of these are like, just kind of.
Like you just listen, you report back, like, uh, so last year, uh, like for the select board, um, I, I would meet with Krista Silva on a monthly basis, and we would have our leadership meetings, and we would, you know, kind of talk about what things coming up, things that came here that people were, you know, percolating. I, you know, share that with them. I'd go to their meetings, I'd look at their agenda to see if there's some things that look school related or articles or things, and um, just kind of hop on to, to listen. Some things can get lost in translation, so I think that's where we found that listening firsthand to some of the, how the conversations happen has been effective. But now that everything's recorded, you can always, you know, go back and don't have to, you know, join live. Um, so I think, I don't know if we want to stick with what we have, but I, I certainly think it would be worthwhile having maybe Alexis join one of the um, the standing, like, you know, like, you know, just to kind of get.
I was saying.
Because you and I fall off at the same time for budget.
Right.
And I think that we need to think about that.
Another couple of years.
We do, we do, but it takes a little bit of a, you know, to learn and.
Um, so I wanted to talk to you about um, joining the Green Meadow Building Committee.
Okay.
Because Hillary isn't able to continue.
Okay.
And we're supposed to have two active school committee members, so it's a good, it's a good one for you to get into, because we're like, you know, we're really into a groove in that, so. Um, so if you'd like to do that.
And that has a, a good cross section of stakeholders.
It's really good.
So, okay, so, yeah, so that would be great. So Brian, uh, I think with the green mother, some like official paperwork or something when it comes to membership.
Generate the list and it goes to MSBA to get signed.
Okay, all right. That one is a little bit more tricky, because it's a, for sure, for that one.
It's up, right.
Okay, that would be great. Um, the finance, I would like to stay on finance as well, and um, CPAC, I do know that we've already started, um, Heather, trying to coordinate to meet with Heather in the CPAC already. So they're trying to get some summer dates that are lined up, but the intent is that we're gonna have probably the next week or two, just a couple of members meet face to face with Heather here, and um, just kind of kick off, you know, where we are, looking at some events for uh, next year, so I hope to be able to report back on um, some happenings there. There's also some new membership coming to CPAC, which we're gonna grab. I don't want to say for sure, because they're still kind of like.
Yeah.
But um, two, two parents um, potentially joining, which will be about that. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, I'll see, that's what happens when you read that spiel, like, it takes like ten minutes.
Something happens when you go on vacation.
Of the list, right?
Yes.
Sort of indicate, okay.
Yeah. Great. We'll just sign up of what we want to do, and then um, one thing I would like to see in the strategic planning and curriculum subcommittee is actually more of the curriculum. Like, I know when, when there's changes happening at the different schools, it would be good to see if that can be kind of filtered through that subcommittee in some way, so that, like, when we have the media, like, at the middle school that's happening.
Yeah.
So maybe that kind of.
Well, I think the first step was what was done with the um, um, the DIP, um, and the, the District Action Plan. So those were two big pieces, and then.
Yeah.
But now, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would think that that might be like, you know, because we're gonna have those cycles now that are coming up. Um, and I don't know if that would be a good place to have a home for.
Yep. Sounds good.
Okay. Um, anything else on liaisons and subcommittees? Um. The only thing that's time sensitive I can think of, Brian, which we haven't had a meeting in a while, was the, the design uh, task force for the field, the project. I know we.
The bleachers.
Yeah, yeah. Do we need to have one soon? I think we maybe do, just because we have some time sensitive deadlines that are coming up, and I just want to make sure we're all with Phil on the same page.
Yes.
Okay, we have like the, the article, like, all that stuff.
Yeah.
Um.
That design was already in place.
Well, we have the CPC going out, but there's just a lot of like, right behind each other. I want to make sure everyone, you know, gets what they need. Um, FINCOM is already asking about.
So I think Greg needs his language by August sixth, I want to say, either August third or August sixth, because they needed X amount of days prior to the.
That's the ballot, that's the ballot, right? That's the ballot, that's not the article language, though. That's the ballot first, that's the two part. That one has to go to the state.
Right.
If I'm remembering, because they put it with the, the presidential ballot. They have to print it. Um, I know he sent over an example of what the fire station, could we share that with, like, our legal counsel, just be like, hey, how does this?
Yeah.
I'd rather, um, I don't know if that, who looked at that one, I'm guessing, you know, Lisa. But just to see, like, this is what we're looking to do for us, make sure that the verbiage.
Yeah, I can send it to you.
Yeah, because um, Sarah's still on the train?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, if we can get maybe Andy to kind of help her, just how does that look for a ballot? Um.
That's enough.
Yeah, okay.
Good on you.
All right, so, but going back to what I was talking about, the, the sub, the subcommittee, if, if we are um, maybe we either just schedule a meeting for, for that in the next week or so. All right, any urgent business?
No, no urgent business.
Okay, public comments, I don't think we had any.
Nope. None.
Really? Moving on, superintendent report?
Well, it's July, so it's a little bit late, but hopefully you got to see that I added pictures, because I went for a walk and did lots of pictures, but um, so we did finish the year, we had two days of retreats, where we'd be sort of reflected on twenty-three, twenty-four, and just focused on building our relationships with our new team. We have several new leadership roles that have been filled. Um, and we have two more days in, in the beginning of August that we continue sort of working together after the masses. So the next week is the Mass Association of School Superintendent's Conference, um, when all, most of the superintendents get together um, at the Cape and DESI related, or NASS puts on the conference of what are the goals, what's the focus for the year, so that's exciting, we'll learn about that on starting Monday.
Any um, sneak peeks of what some hot topics might be, or what the breakout sessions are looking at?
I mean, there are a lot of really good ones. It has to do with like, how, from what I've heard, helping, figuring out how to help everyone thrive. And so then one other question, so who's everyone? I, I guess what.
To define your.
Right, exactly, is it? So it'll be interesting, and lots of good uh, topics that will come out from that. Um, the solar project, you can see uh, the canopy's up. We had an update last time from Byron from Select. Um, I would think.
So we're just in a holding cabinet.
We're just waiting for EverSource hits, comes and does their check, and then it's the button.
But our, our.
Our part is done.
Okay, so the polling part, also, they should all there.
They did there.
Okay.
I'm in good shape.
Right, good, thank you.
Um, and then hopefully, I, I put some pictures of that, because I like.
Good.
Very excited. Long time coming. Nice job. Uh, the Green Meadow Elementary School, Chris is gonna give an update, so I'm not gonna steal his thunder. I can't do as good a job as he can soon anyway. Um, and then I did also take some pictures. You can see the field, actually. I don't know if you can tell exactly from the pictures, but the field's closed and the grass is growing, it looks really healthy. Um, they were actually there the day I took um, DPW cutting. You can see their trucks in the background. Mm-hmm. Um, but it, it's the right thing to do, and let it, it's got a technical term.
Grass.
Yeah, I think.
Like aerate or, I don't know.
Something. It's, it is resting the grass, so no one's playing on it. It's closed, it looks great. You can see, one of the other pictures shows the smaller bleachers by uh, Keenan Field that were taken down, and they did a really nice job. They sand blasted the pad and it's just a safety concern. Um, so that's there. And there's a couple other pictures just of, there's a little set by Keenan Field, but those are safe, because they're like five rows and they're relatively new aluminum.
Yeah.
Uh, and people do sit in those. And then personnel changes were actually almost fully hired for next year. Um, I think Liz at the high school is working on one final position um, right now. Uh, other than that, we're in really good shape. I want to give the principals um, a lot of credit. They started early, they were really thoughtful about it, and they, and the teachers, they put committees together at each building, and they interviewed, and they, you know, had a goal of getting it done in June, and we're pretty close. That, that's hard to do, because sometimes those things just happen, you know, people get an opportunity, and they need to take.
That's a lot of work when you're losing steam at toward the end.
In June, yeah, that's hard, and the heat kicks on.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, yeah, that, I'm not gonna talk about, about Green Meadow, because like, we have Chris here, so.
Um. And superintendent report, any questions for superintendent report? Well, Alexis, so make sure Hillary, okay. Um, all right, then, moving on to the MSBA Green Meadow Building Update, and Chris, the floor drawers. Or Nick.
Okay, great. Thank you. So uh, I'm gonna share my screen, and then uh, we'll talk through some of the updates, where we are with the design process, what's been happening behind the scenes. And then obviously, if anybody has any questions, I'll certainly uh, move to provide you with some information. Okay, and if you let me know when you can see my screen.
Yeah.
Again.
Yes.
Okay, great. So, moving forward. Uh, some of the things we've been working on the background, so from an educational standpoint, I want to bring up the date, we are currently maintaining the approved program space requirements that were submitted during schematic design to the MSBA. Uh, we have had our second round of administration and staff meetings uh, with everybody at Green Meadow, thanks to both Rob Rulo and Karen Lindquist. Um, we shared the plans with them based on our original meetings um, about a year or so ago. Pro, got their input with uh, you know, the various spaces, you know, from pre-K, K, P, E, art, music, uh, the nurse admin, all the specialty groups in the school. Um, happy to report that since then, um, we've provided them with updates. They are all very pleased with the progress. There were no changes. We are meeting their goals and needs, and I believe everybody's just excited to, to see the project happen and get completed. With that, we are also maintaining the approved DESI space requirements uh, for special education and whatnot. So everything that was submitted based on the district's uh, educational program and needs, um, we are continuing to meet those needs. Um, and we, as Brian alluded to earlier before the start of the meeting, we had a meeting with MSBA uh, Monday to bring them up to speed uh, and show them the exact same PowerPoint I'm sharing with you. Let them know what our progress has been, um, and they were pleased with uh, everything that's progressing. We are currently working towards a document submission to MSBA coming up at the end of the month. That will be our sixty percent construction document submission. Basically, what that does is it demonstrates to the NSBA uh, the progress with the construction documents for the new school project, the site, the building, and everything that goes along with that. Um, I'll share with you some of the changes that have come up, which have been extremely minimal um, since our schematic design submission back uh, a year ago, actually. And then what I'd like to do is share with you the early site package progress, and some of the things uh, you can expect to see happening on the school site in the coming weeks when we um, give the contractor the notice to proceed. So first, I'll share with you the latest site plan. Couple of minor changes, um, no cost impact. It was at the request of the school district's um, Green Meadow Education Administration. So basically, um, if you take a look from the upper right, we still have the drive-in from Tiger Drive. It's going to loop around. We have the bus and administration visitor uh, peel off to the front, they'll exit back out. Parents will queue up and drive around the back to a single lane, parent drop-off and pickup location. One of the changes that we've, we were asked to make, and we did study this, we studied a few options with Brian and his teams and our, our civil engineers. We originally had both play areas, the pre-K and the K through three, up here in the upper left-hand corner, the developed area. What we did at the request of the administrative team is we took the kindergarten through third grade play area, and we moved it to the front, which is space number three. In that exchange, we provided some additional parking, so we're maintaining approximately the same number of parking spaces. I believe somewhere around a hundred and twenty-five or so. But what the concern was, um, through the staff was, given that we have a pre-K space here, item number four, very close to the pre-K wing. The concern was, as with young children, if there's an event, all of a sudden, you know, uh, weather starts rolling in, someone gets hurt. They felt it was us, you know, a little bit longer walk to get back into the school. So they wanted to move the K through three play area closer to the front of the school. And off the front of the school, kind of in this general area in the middle of the building, is the cafeteria, the gym, the administration suite, and, and um, health suite. So having this in close proximity allows for um, a couple of things, actually. It allows for the teachers to get the kids out after lunch recess directly outside to the front of the school. This also helps um, the close proximity to be adjacent to the play areas, right, the fields um, and the basketball court. So when students come out, based on the number of kids that they'll have out there, children will have an option of playing on the play structures, uh, some activity tables, or running around in the field, kicking balls, et cetera, getting, getting some energy uh, expelled so they get back into school. So that's kind of the close proximity that affords some nice adjacencies during school hours. It also affords some nice adjacencies after school hours. We know that the town of Mater has a, a nice youth athletic program. They currently practice in the back of the fields where the new school will be located, and so we provided some play areas and, and um, they're not formal fields really, but you can see that there are space for some fields in the front. So when parents are there with their children practicing, and they have younger siblings, et cetera, there is the option for them to utilize the structured play areas, and parents can keep an eye on everybody at the same time. They're also up front, so from a public safety standpoint, public safety officials, um, we did vet this with um, you know, the police as well. They can see these structured play areas from Great Row and when coming into the site. So again, provides for better security, better visibility, better adjacencies, um, and things of that nature. So at the request of the district, we were able to accommodate that. It did not result in any increase in cost of the project. We're just kind of switching around some spaces. It also now affords for those parents who may be coming to pick up their pre-K children uh, after school, while they're maybe waiting for other children, things to go on, they could come in, park, and utilize the pre-K space as well. So it gives the school district a, a lot of various options in how the site is laid out. Any questions about the site?
Um, I just had one, if I'm looking at it, it kind of looks like the current setup a little bit, right, where the playground is.
The last thing they changed was they separated the two playgrounds.
Okay, like, yeah, the preschool one is now on the side, but into the courtyard, but, so basically, it follows a similar layout where it's to the side of the parking lot. Okay, and um.
It's close to the front.
Versus the front.
Yeah, right.
But, yeah. Like, all the kids is close to the front, so they can come and go around the cafeteria and do it easily.
Okay, yeah, we're just, I don't know. Um.
Yeah.
I have a question about five, the general play field, um. Recently, the in front of the high school, that field that's in front of the high school, they did some type of. Uh, survey and underneath it. They found it had like foundation or something from the old building that wasn't fully removed. And is now a bit problematic that they wanted to actually create a usable field there. Um. I just am wondering, number five represents where the current building. Will is right, alright? So when that building is removed, will all the foundation. Be removed with it so that we don't encounter that same type of. Junk, I guess, with the soil issue that they're having now for the for the high school.
Absolutely. The entire building foundations, anything they find down below will be completely removed. And then the appropriate amount of. Um, soil material will be brought in loom. It'll be graded. Now, MSBA does not reimburse for formal fields. But what we do have is just kind of there, just to show as a graphic. They're really placeholders to show that you do have um. You know, a a child's or an elementary size playfield. So you could set up cones, the town could stripe it in the future. It is relatively flat. It'll be sloped enough so that. There will be no standing water and runoff will create it. But it just shows that there's placeholders there for an appropriate practice and play field for the younger children.
Okay, yeah, I think right now the the one in front of the high school, they're finding a lot of like rock and. Tree and which is a safety. So I want to make sure, so that is not an issue we will encounter this go around.
No, it will not. So the the goal is, once they've removed all of the existing building debris. They'll fill in the hole with gravel and then they'll put six inches of loom on top. And will hydro seed it. Um, typically, it takes at least one growing season for it really to come in and thicken. Um, and then the town will be able to utilize that and maintain it. As they would any other field.
And I have another question, but it's not related to this, but I wanted to go around.
What is the blue bear?
Down the lower portion?
No, no, up above five to the left.
So that would be a basketball court.
Oh, okay. It's a mirage. It looked like a pool for a minute.
Yeah, so in the original, in the original site plan layout, we actually had the basketball court over in this area of number seven with the play area that's. Item number three. So what we did is. We broke that out because really we want the basketball court to be in a flatter area. So it gives you, you know, play surfaces throughout the site for the different groups of children, the community, et cetera. Um, and you can see that now parking is dispersed so that parents can come in and utilize those spaces with their kids.
Uh, so I guess my question about having the basketball court. All the way over there in relation to where the um. The K through three playground is. Um, would be. You know, the. Um, recess monitors will end up having to be, you know. Split. And I'm I'm just wondering whether or not that has been brought up to. Um, say, you know. Karen, now that she's the the principal over there and and whether or not and how she feels or, you know. Okay.
Yeah, so you know, everybody from Brian, Rob, Karen, the P E teacher. Um, everybody was part of the um decision-making process. And how the site was laid out, where the the play areas were. Uh, relation to the building, how they were going to be accessed, et cetera. One of the things we do have planned. Is during the day, we're gonna have a gate here. Where the where the road comes in uh on either end to. Eliminate any traffic coming through there during the day. Um, you know, obviously, people can can still come in and park and visit as need to to access the school. Um, but it'll make sure it's a a safe area for kids. Uh, tr- traverse from the play area from the school, et cetera. You won't have people driving through that location. Okay. Uh, any other questions on the site portion?
Um, Alexa, do you have any questions? Okay, um, I had one um other question and it's not really related to um. The layout, oh, first, actually, two more alike. Brian, was there any concern with this change? That or. Okay.
I mean, we asked for it because.
But it's was anything like any concerns that came up in the conversation of 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 why this might be an issue or in any department brought up?
No, the departments were fine. I mean, like the D P W, the fire, the police, they were all good with this.
No hesitation from any department on.
It was a concept. Question as to whether or not it was gonna cost more because whether there was ledge underneath there.
Right.
Um, but there's not, so it's not gonna be any additional cost, so.
Alright, that's great. Um, and then the other question was um. I don't know if this is way early in the stage to be thinking about solar um and wait. Like um, like on the. Parking lots, is that?
No, that's part of the conversation.
Yeah, so. Uh, I can fill you in. We we are in discussions with Select uh and the town's solar provider. The roof of the new school building will be populated with solar panels as. Any new building should be. Um, and then we've been talking with the district. Based on the goals to get. As close to a net zero building or net zero to the extent possible. Um, so we are going to plan on putting a solar canopy down here um in area number seven. So it's not in front of the school to, you know, inhibit any of the the aesthetics or the use. Um, but it will be down here. It's close to the electric uh main electric room. So we have more efficiencies with getting that power to the electrical system in the school. So that is currently in the planning stages. Um, and what we hope to do is bid that out. As part of the project, and then once it's constructed, the town will be able to put panels on it uh like they have done with the high school.
Great, thank you. Awesome.
Okay. So we'll move along to the floor plans. Um, here's the first floor plan. There are really no changes in the plan since we've been showing this throughout uh the last several months. Right now, we're currently just uh. Detailing and fine tuning everything, uh labeling everything. I've I, you know, we're kind of showing some furniture layouts. We went through this with the staff as well. Uh, identifying their spaces, making sure that we have the storage needs, the doors, the toilet rooms. Everything that kind of goes around uh along with a early elementary school building. Would desire. It is very efficient in the fact that we've got one main corridor that will go from one end to the other. The classroom wings kind of flank the main common and community space. Which does allow for after-hours use, very ease. For example, if you've got a recital on the weekend, you can lock off the. The classroom wings and then people can come in the main entrance, go directly to the cafeteria where there's a stage. Or at night, if you've got youth groups or adult groups using the gym for. Various practices or games, et cetera. Um, so it keeps everybody kind of secluded into one area. Um. The spaces all meet the MSBA requirements. They have addressed all of the staff requirements that we've uh. We've discussed through our meetings. If we move up to the second floor. Kind of the same thing, the layout, the easy wayfinding for the young children as they move from pre K to K first grade. And then up to the second floor. Um, typically, what we'll get into in the future is. Kind of the the color schemes that will go into the different wings, et cetera. So kids can identify that very easily. Hey, if I'm in first grade. I can identify because my classroom wing is color X. And if I've got to go to a different wing, things of that nature. Uh, we find it very positive that the young children will work with the building committee and the staff. Uh, to identify those appropriate colors, uh, et cetera. They're usually um. Not necessarily very bright and vigorous because we do also have kids that have. Sensitivity to certain colors and noises that we want to be be able to address. Uh, so we'll make sure they're very appropriate for the district. Um, so at this point, you know, no changes there. We've got the classroom wings. The second floor does have a media center. Uh, which is centered. And one of the things we did kind of go through in a schematic design is we've grouped the guidance suite. Um. And counselors in one area centered in across from the media center. So it gives an extra set of. Adult eyes on the building. It gives administration and it also centralizes kind of the guidance area for young children. Easy wayfinding. They can go from any one of the wings um and visit the spaces if need be. In talking with the staff, um, our understanding is they also have lunch with some of the kids at times. Um, you know, during the pro uh the progress of the day. Uh, we have this S T E room, science, technology and engineering, which is off. The main media center. The art room is across the area, so when we. The when the district starts getting into the staff plans, for example, project-based learning and projects. Uh, that will be shared between S T E, art and media center activities. Uh, all that's in close proximity. Uh, so the adjacencies are pretty good. Again, the uh classroom wings all have. Staff and student toilet rooms within them. Uh, there are doors at the end of the corridors and stairs. So that during security um or just kind of confining people to one space or another, that can be done very easily. Um. And and that's kind of our plan layout up to date, not really changed since um the initial design, so. We were hoping to progress that throughout. Once we've had our initial, you know, approval of spaces with the district. Then we just kind of fine tune that as we've gone through and and that's where we're at. Anybody have any questions about? The building layout?
No. No. Alexis? Yep. Um. I can't tell if um. First one, did I hear you said that there's restrooms in each classroom? No, or each wing, right?
Just so the pre K. Uh, has. I'll go back one page.
On the second, the first floor, right?
Right, so on the first floor, the pre K and kindergarten's room all have shared bathrooms within them, right? They are handicap accessible. Um. Single user. Uh, unisex type toilet rooms uh with age-appropriate fixtures. In each of them. And then when you get to the first, second and third grade wings, there are more conventional gang toilet rooms for boys and girls. And single user unisex uh toilet rooms for staff and students.
And the media center on the second floor that you were mentioning, um. I know, I think from what I'm seeing, the not and one version of this, it was kind of like an open space, but that's been changed. There's now that a hallway, is that right? That it is, it's not like.
Yes, yes, that we did originally have a um.
Like a centralized area, it's looked like, but I think there was concerns raised about noise and like.
Yeah, yeah, we've done it some project. We thought it might be interesting here, but the the district preferred not to have that. They wanted enclosed space, so we responded to that. So we do have an enclosed media center. There is some glass. Uh, for visuals out into the corridor, gets natural light in, things of that nature. But it is a dedicated space and we actually have. So it's kind of separating into. Three compartments, if you will. We've got the main media center with the circulation desks and tables and book stacks. All the all the shelving will be low, so it's there's visibility throughout and kids can access the books. There's kind of also um off that, there's a little reading area. So if you have people come in that do reading to the children, et cetera, it's a quiet space. And then to the right of the media center. Um, we have. Uh, kind of a. I'll call it a very flexible space. There's an operable partition that can open and close. And it can be open for. Any activity that the stu- uh, the students or staff wants to use it for. Or they can close it and it creates a flexible learning space for, it could be for an additional classroom. It could be for. Students who are learning how to use the computer or tablets. Um, it's really gonna be at the the district's dis- discretion. Um, so, but it provides flexibility for, maybe there's a bubble here and you need another classroom. Um. Another activity that that may need to take place.
And I I guess the. Other question, this might be just to understand from, I know at one point we're gonna have some like a security or. Discussion about safety, security aspects, and I don't, uh, I know that at the time we weren't quite there yet, but. I don't know if we're getting closer to maybe having um. An update about. Some of that and maybe some part of that might be an executive session if we if we need to. Um, but I just wanted to. See if we could, you know, have that more sooner than later if we had.
Yeah, so we did have a number of security meetings. Uh, with Brian, Rob, Karen and and the the key administrative people. Um, police and fire chiefs were part of that. We have a security consultant on our staff. Uh, that does this nationally. Um, so we talked about. Everything about security, the site, the building, access control, cameras. All the conditions that you would you would expect to find in a modern day school. Um, what we can do. At some point in the coming weeks is, um, I can even come in um. To a meeting. As opposed to presenting it, you know, through Zoom and sit with you, share the plans and discuss it. Um, I would expect or suggest that that might be done um in an executive session format.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I um. Yeah, I and nothing like earth shattering right now. I just know that the conversation has come up. Last year, Jerry had brought up for our own school and I just want to make sure that thread. Um, continues and and I think at the time that the subcommittee hadn't yet been formed yet, so it would be great to. Put some time maybe in the fall for us to uh. Have an executive session. Nick, I saw that you raised your hand.
I I was just gonna mention that they believe Jerry was involved as well and he's part of that safety committee. He's been along on every step of the way.
Yeah, I'm sure he's championing as much as he can. Uh, as well. It'd be good to hear, you know. Where how far everything has come with um. For that need as well.
Sure. Absolutely. Absolutely. Any other questions on the floor plans?
No, no, thank you very much for this update and all the work that you're all doing.
Alright, I do have more if you.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so um, I've got a couple of renderings I want to share with you. Just talk about some of the exterior features of the school. So this. Kind of gives you the bird's eye view of the site layout. How it's laid out. Um, parents will come in and buses, et cetera. The buses and and visitor staff will peel off in the front. Uh, parents kind of drive around the back. You can see the multiple parking areas, the play areas. And how they're related to the building. Uh, the front plaza. And then once you get into a more. Centralized look. We are currently, the so the colors right now are just placeholders. Uh, we're gonna be meeting with the. The building committee and the working group to talk about specific cool school colors, but one of the things we want to identify is. Um, we've got this kind of central entrance in the front. That is gonna be a little bit more unique. It'll be something that's very identifiable, so people who are coming to the school for the first time. Know where to go to access it, the front entrance. Um, but you can see how we've got some push and pull in the front elevations. There may be some stripes. That's all gonna help kind of scale the school down a little bit for the younger children, so it doesn't seem. To be this big massive uh building and be overwhelming. Um, and it'll kind of provide some nice character to the campus, right? You have Fowler, you have the high school. Um, and something that the the. The town can be proud of. If we continue on around. To the backside, uh, parents will queue up and be able to come down the single drive. Very safe, so nobody can pass anybody while they're picking up and dropping off students. There are things that we're talking about with the district in helping to organize that. Uh, some of the districts, for example, will have a um. Kind of a queue code on a post, so as parents come in, they can scan it. They will show up on the districts like a. Staff will have an iPad and they'll know who's coming in first to get the kids out in a particular order. So that nobody's left behind, becomes very efficient. So nobody's waiting in line while their children are coming in or coming out. Um, so that's something we're also working with the district to possibly implement as a suggestion. Uh, when school starts opening. One of the things I did talk to Karen Lindquist about is. I know it's a couple of years away, but when they're getting ready to open, right? That summer. When the superintendent and the principal put out their. Pre-school opening uh notes, we'll provide a site plan showing. Traffic, um, how to come in, how to exit, where to park. So you get that out ahead of time, so the parents. So you get that out ahead of time, so the parents um. Will know how to proceed, because the first few weeks, especially in a new school, are always a little confusing. It'll help to have the police and staff members out there to help direct. But keep in mind, every year, you know, you're gonna have a twenty percent turnover with new kids coming in, because some kids are now going to Fowler School. So this routine can happen at the beginning of every school year, um, working with the districts, it's been very, very favorable. It, you know, kind of lessens the congestion at the beginning of the year, helps people understand it. Um, so then the last piece I wanted to share with everybody. Is our early site enabling package. We have put out a package uh that was recently bid and we're happy to say it came in, you know, about seven hundred thousand dollars underbid. Which is a good savings to start, um, and what it does is it prepares the site. So that once we're finished with the design and we bid the building package, the contractor can come in. And start building, right, they can start excavating for their foundations. What this will help do is it's gonna create an access road. Um, around the side of the existing building, which you can see, this road. Will become in the future, the part of the permanent road that's accessing around the building. You can see where the new building's kind of located, um, we are gonna make sure that. The separation between the existing school and the new construction is done with jersey barriers and fencing, uh, so that. First and foremost, student and staff uh security and safety. Utilizing the existing school uh school while this works going on is maintained. We're gonna have a kickoff meeting with the contractor, we'll have Brian and and key administration people, we'll have the police and fire chiefs there. To make sure DPW to make sure that, hey, while the contractor's coming in to do his work, which will include cutting down of trees. Removing of any ledge, um, filling in the ledge removal process, so that you have a nice flat building pad. Uh, so that the next contractor come and start, and then also these circles down here, installation of our geothermal heat pump wells. So all that preliminary work will be done, uh, starting midsummer, it'll continue on into the fall. So that when we get a contractor on board after the first of the year in twenty twenty-five. All the prep work is done, or I should say probably about ninety percent of the prep work is done. We've done this on a number of projects, I've got a project that's going on right now, um, the contractor came in and was able to start working. Uh, what that does is also help with the bid process, we've got a lot of bid savings. Um, during that timeframe, the schedule was able to be condensed into the time where we're saving things on the backend. So we can get the building demolished and abated and the fields done that much quicker as well. So that it really helps with the schedule, it helps with the bidding costs that we'll see, we see favorable bids. Um, we expect and hope for the same on this project and um. During the process, we'll make sure safety is maintained, we're gonna have a meeting with the contractor to tell them, first and foremost. You need to provide a schedule of your activities, so we can make sure that Karen and her staff are aware of it. If there's any days where we need quiet time due to testing or things of that nature, we can, we can implement that. And again, make sure that the site, the entire site is safe uh from start to finish. So that's the kind of the work you're gonna see going on in starting in probably end of uh, end of July.
Wow. Marla, did you have any other questions?
Any questions?
The only question I had was the where the geothermal uh wells are going, um.
Yep.
You guys moved them, because originally you were, you had them kind of, I think on the left-hand side.
Yeah, yeah, they were mislocation.
Right, you guys moved them and does that mean that you're taking down trees all through there?
We are taking down some trees, yes, as we are with the entire site, there is some tree removal, um. The reason for moving the wells, there's, there's a couple of reasons for that, number one, if we were to locate them out in the front. Um, where we were originally looking, they wouldn't be able to be installed until after the existing building is demolished and removed, which means. During the first winter, you'd have temporary heating pumps and heat system costing money. So what we did was, we wanted to get them in early. So that they can be connected to the school once the school is built, that saves some money, it's gonna save. We estimated somewhere around a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the project, which I think is is a good savings. Um, number two, having them closer to the building. Um, has some efficiencies, right, if if they're further away, we need more wells. Because we're gonna lose some of that energy between the wells and the building. By moving them in the back, we were able to reduce a number of the wells, again, thereby saving some money. So yeah, there's some trees coming down, but the nice thing is, once these wells are installed, they exist about four feet below the ground. And they extend down some six hundred feet uh into the earth's surface to help either gain or dissipate heat. Um, what that'll do is, this area will then, once it's done, it'll be loomed and seeded, so the. The school has an additional play area out behind the school during recess, et cetera, should they want to utilize that. Um, so it kind of created some efficiencies, some cost savings, some scheduling efficiencies. Um, all along the rate to make it a, just a better project in in general, so that now. When the building opens in the fall of, I believe, uh, let's see for twenty-five, twenty-six. So twenty-six, twenty-seven, I don't know the exact dates, but when it opens in the fall, the building is fully operational. The heating system, cooling system, everything is there, and then we can then work to take down the existing building. And then just finish up some parking areas and play areas and then have it completed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions? Nope. Okay, I had a couple of questions um on on this slide and then the one that you had before, so on this slide, just to. On on Morrow's questions about the location of the wells. It it looks like they now go into a different parcel that's no longer a school property, is that? The DPW of town?
Yes, so it's all town-owned property, it's owned by the DPW, we conversed and um coordinated with Justin DiMarco. Initially, we both kind of had the same idea when we were talking about geothermal wells. And his comments and underst- our understanding is, um, all he needed was, we needed was his approval. It is still all town-owned property, um, it does not affect anything that he has. It's not close to anything that uh is of concern, other than just other woods, so. It is on, on some unused property.
Where, by just maybe more of a procedural aspect. I would think that the select board would need a vote on that, because it was never set up for the use for school. I just wanna make sure, I know Justin has authority over the DPW, but when it comes to new projects on town. Siding, that was not a parcel part of the regular, I just wanna make sure we're not. Leaving anyone, um, you know, I don't know even if it would be just just a matter of saying, hey, this is now extended beyond.
Krista Silver's on the committee and Greg Johnson is also, and if they were both, um, you know, if that, that was brought up to them and this is.
Okay, alright, so they, they all are um.
And there's, and there's nothing having to do with the MSBA, the being on a different parcel, that there's gonna be an issue.
Okay.
No, because it it is in fact all town-owned property, it's just scheduled, one's DPW's, one's school use. So yeah, we're, we are good to go.
Brilliant, because not only is it gonna be more efficient to put in, um, but maintaining and all of that, there's less stress, so it's gonna.
No, and I I I totally agree with the idea, I think it adds the complexity of another parcel that's now multi-use. We only had the one parcel, which was the Crow Green Meadow one, that was kind of now we have another. Parcel that is, has overlap for school and town use, so it's a joint, so I don't know if that impacts. The ownership or in some capacity, because now school property will be overflowing into another parcel. And so that's where I, again, I don't know all the how that works out, but I just wanna make sure, because the deeding on the pro parcel is a little ugly. Um, and I wanna make sure we do our due diligence and if there's deed changes that need to happen because of this, okay, Nick.
Do, I'm wondering if, Mary, if you remember if this was a, just an easement as opposed to changing ownership? Like, do we actually, we don't have to change ownership since it's all town, right?
I don't know if we were joint owners, because that's what happened with the other parcel that we're co-owners kind of, where we both have ownership of it. Um, but if it's an easement, I don't know, I just hadn't seen anything in writing about that, and I just wanna make sure that we.
We can definitely ask again, we can make sure.
Yeah, we can, we can check in with Phil and see if he, what he had to do to put something in in paper or whatever with Justin, we can find something that's. That's concrete, I think that's what you're looking for, is make sure we have something, right?
Yeah, I wanna make sure we have some historical documents. We need to, you know, dig these things up and, you know, I have no idea what's gonna happen, who, you know, is it school property, is it? Town property, who's responsible, all that jazz, um. So thank you for explaining that, and I think the idea behind it is great, so I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that we're um. Just crossing our our Ts and Ds and Is on, and then the the slide before, when you had the, yes, this one and then the one before. Actually, maybe the one prior to, it was the nice, um, yes, um. I know we have a lot of kids, because this complex, this area is, is a lot of walking, so if siblings who will walk from. Fowler to Green Meadow oftentimes, and I just would like to see maybe in a future um. Rendering about the safety, the pathway that will go for um. You know, each school, so if there are siblings who are gonna help go pick up their sibling here, because right now, I know we've, we've added a lot of. Crossovers now, they have to, uh, and I just wanna make sure that that's highlighted for the public on. Those, um, you know, so if they're coming through, for instance. And I don't know if this is gonna happen in the future, but sometimes we met or they go to Fowler to do after, after-school care or whatever, kind of. Uh, you know, is there gonna be a dedicated path created that will be, you know, um, paid? To allow that, because the school was set back a little bit further now.
So, to to answer your question, um, we do have sidewalks and and crosswalks, so from the main entrance. There is a sidewalk along the drive that will come back towards Tiger Drive with a crosswalk. That again, then gets into Fowler School, one of the things we can't do is we can't do anything that crosses the wetlands, so. We are forced to create that sidewalk, item number ten, that comes down beyond the wetlands here, which is existing. And it won't change.
Okay, but from Green Meadow, I'm sorry, from Great Road, um, up to the school, so.
Great Road, we do have a sidewalk that comes up from, it's the same one that exists, we'll improve that, that exists between. Tiger Drive and the Crow Park parking area, so that walk will continue up along the drive. And then there will be a raised crosswalk here with lights. So, just like you would have many, any pedestrian crosswalk, there'll be a button there, and then they'll get flashing lights to make sure it is. Uh, any vehicles are identified, and one of the reasons we located it this far up, because now it gives you a nice sightline. And you're not close to any corners where cars may be coming around unexpectedly. And then that'll get you inside the sidewalks that will access the entire perimeter of the building and play areas.
Okay, alright, thank you very much.
Welcome. Anything else?
That's it, thank you so much, Chris, and everybody's work.
Yeah.
Really good, Mary, I know that you guys, well, thanks for all the meetings that you guys are on to, and Brian.
You're very welcome, um, when you're ready to uh discuss, you want a presentation on the. Security or any other aspects, we can, uh, certainly I'll schedule a time to come out and meet with you in person.
I'm, I'll make sure Jerry makes it to that one instead of me.
I know he couldn't put it into the reports he's provided before and it's his passion, so I really would wanna make sure that he. You know, we get to talk with him directly about um that as well, so thank you so much, Nick. Not that you're not ever welcome here, because I know you're always doing so much work behind the scenes as well, so thank you very much.
Yeah, Chris knows how much I've been picking apart the inside of the building, less about the outside of the building.
It's alright, it's alright.
It's extra help, extra eyes, alright, everybody, thank you, I'm gonna jump off too, if we're all set. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Also, we're meeting the select board next Tuesday. Yeah, for the same presentation, just so you know that.
Okay. Exactly, exactly, that's always a concern, people are like, oh, I didn't hear that, um, so I, that's, that's great, um. I just, maybe because I went through it and researching all about the article.
Happen fifty years from now, you're like, we're all, nobody's here anymore, so.
And then we're like, oh, all this school property on this, and you know, um, okay. I'll, I'll be there for it, but I definitely wanna make sure that we get something as writing about that. And I wanna make sure the select board, even though I know Chris is on it. Yeah, I know, I know.
We did ask the question, we we specifically did ask the question, so.
Okay, alright, alright, that's great. Um, okay, so moving on, then the next thing is um the operating principle. So I was able to upload it into our folder, I tried to do it the other day, but um. For some reason, the permission, my permissions weren't, I think, I don't know, anyway, so I saved. And Hillary's not here, so we're gonna, um. This is just our annual for for you, this is something we started, we've been working on for several years, and finally, last year, we put. Finalized uh to paper, and this has helped us every year for the school committee and the superintendent to kind of um. Make sure that we are working within our our area. And that we are, you know, supporting each other in the most effective way, um, that could be how we represent, how we do business, how we communicate with. So there's a lot of different topics, um, mask has helped us in the past with providing some. Some language, different, different school committees have some version of this, and so, um. Through a lot of effort, we found this is the one that might work, so I think that. It would make sense if we can, oh, and I don't, you don't have a um stamp yet, right?
No.
Okay, so. Maybe you will sign, you can print.
We have to do DocuSign, right? We do, oh, well, we could do DocuSign.
Okay, maybe we'll do DocuSign, we put this in a PDF and we can do DocuSign.
Use it all the time.
Yeah, just relax us, because the rest of us, we could just do.
Okay, yeah.
If that works for you.
So I just. Till she gets a stamp.
Yeah, all I did was just kind of plug in every, the Alexis as a new member, um, and. I just wanted to make sure if anyone has any questions, otherwise, I think we, we actually really don't need to. Vote on it, we're all just gonna be signing it.
Just give you approval to to sign.
Yeah, exactly, if we're all fine with the language that we're using here, it was just.
I don't have any terms.
No, me, yeah, no. Okay, alright, so then, um, I guess with objection, um, I will move that we, um. Approve or I guess authorize Colleen to use our signature stamp. To sign the FY twenty-five school committee and superintendent operating principles and protocols. Any, wait a second.
You say without objection.
And, uh, so Colleen, if you can use our signature stamp um to sign this, and then Brian. Looks like you're gonna, your signature as well, and then, um, and then afterwards, maybe. Um, circulate it to everyone, so just so we can have on record for, for this year. Awesome. Okay, um, quad board meeting. Um, so July thirty-first is. Brian, did you have any questions about the operating principles? I know we haven't really talked about it, okay, they were from last year or so, okay, very great. I didn't know if anyone had any tweaks or anything for them, alright, great. The quad board meeting, um, July thirty-first. And I believe Brian was at six-thirty again, was that they were, right?
Yes.
Station, right? Yeah, so it was gonna be.
I'm so glad that they're doing it again, so like.
Yeah.
So soon.
Yes, like, I know Lindsay's really searching for for that and, um.
What's gonna be the objective?
Um, so Jeff is the chair this year for for the select board, uh, I'm guessing he'll have a little bit more structure to how. He he wants to present it or the work that he wants to do. Um, I gotta tell you, I don't really know much as far as agenda items, nothing's been shared that I've seen. Except for the date. Um, I just wanna make sure, Brian, you have not seen anything either, right?
I have not.
It was meant to be a follow-up for the last meeting, right, so what were we supposed to go into it with any information or?
Um, well, for the school where we left off, because there was. One voice who voiced uh concern. one voice who voiced, uh, concern about this, the project, the bleacher project. Cause we were talking about um, capital projects and things that aren't funded. And there's a whole host of things. There's, you know, the town has a lot. And I think I was like, well, the school committee has not received any type of recommendation from any board advising that we change our path for our project. So we're in the eleventh hour, um, and you know, as far as re-prioritizing efforts. Um, I, I don't see it a viable, I don't see a reason why we would just change. I think my concern is gonna be that they're trying, they, some people might try to pit projects like the senior center against, and you know, reality is a town inevitably has multiple needs that you need to figure out a strategic way to move forward in it. You don't stop a project to do one. So I, I don't know what may come of it. I just know that at the end of the meeting, a lot of people did feel like nothing was, there was nothing really prioritized. Um, so I, I really don't know what's gonna come of this meeting.
The conversation that we went into it with, that, um, Brian and Wayne had done the work on. Yeah. Like the, the long term, this is what we need for the next five years. Nothing came out of that. Did everybody else not do a similar thing? Cause I thought that.
No, we were only asked to do, we were only asked to do one. Um, they, the town did, Greg did put like a whole bunch of like one of his slides. There was a lot of different town projects that needed to, to get done, like the, like the garage and.
So they were talking about the capital, which I know was one of the lead items.
Capital, it seems to be a lot of capital. And to be honest, um, you know, there should be, if we're gonna do a capital, like override or whatever it is, I, I've always been in favor of doing something that, that joins, like it shouldn't just be only one project. I would rather have something that's more representative of the town need. But I can't do anything or we can't do anything besides school, you know? So there is no, you know, I don't know if what's gonna be, what's ready for the, the seniors, what they might do or what. I'm just know that for us and our timeline, we have the, um, the, the ballot question that's due in a couple of weeks that has to go out. We have to put the article together. Jillian actually had already reached out about the school committee, um, heading over to one of their meetings. We've submitted the CPC application, which I don't, I know we got an acknowledgement from, but we didn't get.
Is there a date that?
Right, we didn't, I think they had to schedule a meeting and they hadn't scheduled. They normally didn't have like a, a lot of, I don't think they do like a July meeting normally. So I'll circle back, see what, what that.
And maybe reach out to Jeff and say, you know, can we get the agenda for?
I'll talk, yeah, um, I'll reach, I'll get the doc. I'm gonna have to anyway, cause we need to re-establish leadership meetings. And I don't know if that, that time worked well for him, um. We were, Chris and I, and, and we were meeting like at three o'clock, like once a month, the first one day of every month. And I don't know if that's gonna work with, with Jeff. So, anyway, that's, that's what I know about, that the CPC application was received, um. Oh, we, uh, the dollars for the project, I was asked this question recently. I know it's on, um, in our, in our link. And also I just wanted to, again, thank you for the sign. I just, every time I go by it.
We need to put some more zip ties on the one around.
Oh, I, he already did it.
Oh, did he?
Yes, I, I.
I saw it today, it looked nice.
Cause I was like, every time I went by, it's like, done, and I gotta get my zip ties.
I know, I was gonna do that too. But then I, I drove by this morning and it was all flipped up. So I, I did send him an email and he, he fixed it very quickly, so.
There was, um, there was, um, something about the financing of how much, if when we did the override or for the bleacher project, the impact per household. And I, I think we, I wanna make sure that we're recirculating that because as we get closer, I wanna, wasn't it like seventy-five? Was it something a year or was, was like fifty dollars a year?
I guess, but I don't remember.
If you could have, uh, well, we might need to get another one because I think the, the number went high. So if you can have still, um, yeah, I think it was. They worked on one. I just wanna, I wanna bring that up again and bring that, bubble that up because as we get closer to town meeting, Mary and I are gonna, um, go to the seniors. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna do an outreach with them at the, at their, on their, um, at their place. Yeah, we figured that, you know, let's ask question that doesn't.
Do we also need to do like, um, what Mary did for the, for Green Meadow, um, like doing a table at, um, the farmer's market or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, we, we did quite a number of them there, actually. Yeah, takes, takes people to do it.
Um, you know, I don't, you know, yeah, I, I, I wanna make sure we get our, that's thing for our buck too. Like where are the people? That's how I wanna go where the senior, you know, they're the ones, I think, who often don't have access to the online information as readily. So I thought.
Hmm, amazing how many people don't do Facebook and Instagram. And we found it, and that's young people. I was amazed at how many people did not, so. So, so just quick question. So what are we putting in the article? Are we putting the three point two million or are we putting the different?
Well, well, yeah, because.
Cause we're asking for two point one million from CPA.
Right, because that's only, um,
It can't.
Yeah, it's only CPC eligible stuff.
Okay, oh, that's right too. Okay.
Um, and it can't be like the project manager salary, they can't be in that. So yeah, I think that's what the, the number would be, that we would do a little bit, you know, round it up and then whatever, like it comes out lower, right?
Yep, yep. So put the high number and then adjust it down.
Yeah. And then there was a follow-up question. I guess the select board somehow it, it, it was brought up, um, about rentals and the ADA compliance.
I thought that was one of the most interesting things is that we can't keep doing the rentals because they're not ADA compliant and
Yeah.
we can't, can't do it.
We found the same question like every two months. And the answer is the same. Is that the bleachers we've been renting are not ADA compliant. They were never intended to be for long term. They're only being used to, and in accompanying with the press box that's there. Once we take it down, then we would have to rent a platform or something to that effect, cause then we'll have no press box. Um, and the bathrooms, porta potties do not meet ADA compliance, so.
We keep kicking, kicking the can down.
Yeah.
The road, so.
Yeah, and, um, I just think it's really important to remember, like, people have gotten hurt, you know, and we're not doing ourselves, you know, any, any benefit by just, you know, minimizing it. This is a continued, every day that those things are up. Um, you know, we, it's, we need to get things moving. I was asked recently by a select board member, um, why we didn't, um, tear them down recently. And they seem to be unaware that the DPW and Greg had advised us not to tear them down because it would cost more as a separate project versus incorporating. So I just wanna make sure that we are all on the same page. If you all get asked questions about that, which inevitably may happen. Um, we talked about it at our meetings, we explored the options. And, um, it is something that, decision that was made, um, with the recommendation of the town to not tear them down now, to put up the fence.
And to your point, it also keeps the press box wide, which that's why all the electricity.
Right.
That's the other piece of that.
Right, it's, it's a big, it's also a larger demo than, cause it has electricity. It's not just, it's not just as simple as a forty thousand, I think.
Not like the ten thousand that was across the way, just the regular bleachers.
So, all right, um, can everyone go to the July thirty-first meeting? Um, okay, all right.
I thought it was the third. It's, I think it's the third.
Oh, oh, no. So Colleen, can you, can you put us a placeholder for July thirtieth at the fire station?
I will try, cause that will be out west.
Okay, no worries.
Yeah.
Don't worry, I don't, we're not gonna have to do it.
I'm not in the PD and B.
Right, I don't know, like even last time.
I hope that we, the conversation around priorities. If that is all that happens for a while, and if that doesn't happen, I will be there.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, um, yeah, I, I hope in a minimum, that's really what, what happens too, is that we can uh, figure out. And also, so if not this, then how are we gonna, like, whatever project doesn't, you don't want a priority now, it still is a project that needs to happen. You can't just say, you know, get it off the list. Like what is a plan for, for doing whatever it is? Or if it's not this year, if it's next year or whatever that might be. That's really how the conversation needs to happen. Not like this is not a priority. Well, then what is, it still needs to happen. What does that mean? What, if not, in what? So, um, I think going to the, the FinCom, Brian, I don't, I, I would look to you and, and, and maybe Wayne to let me know what kind of, what dates um, they meet on, on Mondays. So I know September is, is gonna be pretty tight though. I mean, you're just coming back to school.
What do they, I'm just curious, what's the?
Um, we're gonna have an article. So they're gonna want us to talk, speak to the article about, um,
About the bleachers.
About the bleacher project. Yeah, that's gonna be on the warrant for the special town meeting. So I imagine they're just gonna ask some questions about language, the need, what do we do, are we diligent? They're gonna, they'd have to provide a recommendation.
I get, okay.
Just like annual town meeting. So they're gonna have to give the recommendation if they want more information about it. Um, by then, I'm hoping you'll know also about the, um, CPC application. So whatever we are asking for.
Yeah, let's see if we can sort of align these. So we know where CPC stands.
Exactly.
That's why I wanna go still and get some meetings. So we can make sure that we're kind of getting all these time sensitive date things or, um.
And there's a lot gonna be probably key if we know where select board stands on this as well.
I'm guessing we'll find out by July thirtieth. Well, I'll, I'll say, let me take that back. I guess we'll, they have to, but they wanna vote and, and say, like, the whole board have to vote and say, we're not in favor of this. They haven't done that. Two years ago, they advised us to proceed with this project. And so that's where, that's where we are. Until they advise otherwise, it would be very foolish because, because of their original advisement is why we proceeded to ask the town for money. You gotta design, you know, so.
And there are people, like, I have not gotten any uh, information from seniors that are opposed to this project. In fact, one person who came to one of our meetings in spring, I'll go out on a limb and say as a senior, right?
Well, why?
We had some seniors. Oh, yeah.
It's a category. It's Kevin Hearn.
No, I think, I, I, yeah, I hear you. I think the issue, which was known two years ago, was that the senior population, the senior center is something that they felt that they've been neglected for a while, which is not anything doing the school commit, you know, it's nothing of our doing. But I think there might be a tug on why are you prioritizing this when we've been at? Like some, some of that may be narrative behind the scenes. Um, again, nothing of our doing. It is what it is. Both projects have been kicked out and can, you know, for several years. Uh, I don't know, I don't believe the senior, um, building is any closer to any type of recommendation or decision that can, but I don't know.
That's why Jerry couldn't be here tonight, cause he was at a senior meeting.
Yeah, I was actually thinking of, uh, their meetings, maybe go into one of their meetings just to, you know, hear some of the conversations firsthand. Just a little bit and, um, you know, I, I really hope there's nobody trying to pit projects against each other. That really bugs me when this is all its town need. So, but I think that's really what it is, is that some people are like, if we're paying, but that's why I wanna get the dollars. So we can actually put numbers to what is it we're talking about that we're paying for this project? It'd be great if they could do both. I mean, hey, do senior and that. They wanna have a one article, let's, you know, together. I mean, like, I wouldn't be opposed to anything. I just haven't seen anything that's really outlined, so. All right, so we're all, I can reply back that we are on board for July thirtieth. And we all can be there.
Let's know what the agenda, what the goal is.
Would like, that we would like to get someone to make him the agenda. And then so, with that, great. Um, CPC application, we kinda touched on that a little bit.
Just need to know when they're gonna be talking about it.
Yes, and let me look and see when they're, it says possible vote. Are, do we need to vote? Uh, no. No, there's a thing that we're voting on right now, cause we already voted at the last meeting on it and no, but it's just, I'm just trying to see if they have.
Schedule up. I know I did a little bit ago and I.
Just Wednesday.
First to third.
Yeah, yeah, so I'll look for the next meeting and, um, but Annalise, I thought she said she would let us know at her, um, at her last email, she acknowledged receipt of the information from Mike. And Mike did a great job.
He did.
He really did. He always, he's so detail oriented, being thorough. And so, um, no, kudos to him for really being so diligent and detail oriented about that, um. So that will, the outcome of their vote will inform what we're asking for ultimately. All right, um, anything else, Brian, that you for the bleacher update? I know we have the, the fence, the fencing around there is just gonna stay up until, until we get back.
Right.
Or is it just till whenever, right? Until.
We have it for the year. It was, it was a setup, leave and then go away.
Right.
Keeps it safer.
Yeah, no.
And if does perchance go on longer, then we.
We can renew it if.
We can just, but it would be a lot cheaper to renew because they're not putting it up and taking it down. They're just.
Right.
They're just paying to put it in place. Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Uh, anything else about the bleacher project that we? Okay, so you'll.
I'll reach out to Phil and Greg and see who, I think it's Greg actually working with, and I forget about her, about the tax impact with Stefan.
Stefan, no, I was gonna say, who's the new, um?
That's what I thought.
Is it Stefan? Stefan doesn't do, doesn't do that. She's HR.
She's a job.
She's the assistant administrator.
Right, yeah. Oh, that's right, right.
But I'll ask him about tax impact.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it was another analysis. So we had one, but now that we have the number went up a little bit, um, it'd be good to kind of have that at our hand. We can just either circulated, um.
We're featuring a Walsh. To be the treasurer. I think it's Jen, that's probably gonna be, go through Greg.
I'll start with him.
Yeah.
Are you still meeting with him regularly over the summer, just?
Yeah.
Is he okay? Did he come back from, uh, in surgery or something? When he says he's got his, oh, Greg.
No.
He got sea legs, or he got his legs back under him or something. Well, maybe he was.
He's on vacation.
Maybe he's on vacation.
He's maybe going to the cave. It was quite healthy when I saw.
Anything else on bleachers? Any questions? No, okay.
Well, so yeah, I should say it or not. I, I wish we could get this, and maybe we won't get the select board, but I wish we could get the select board to go with us to the CPC to talk about the value of this project. I mean, it's, it would be very, I think it would be helpful. I don't know, but I just feel like we're the only ones that are, you know, asking them for this. And I know they're an independent group and that, but I think if, I just feel like if there was more support, maybe they would, um, think differently, but I don't know if that's possible.
Um, I can ask, you know, I can ask and see, hey, we would like to go. Would, I mean, it'd be great to, it's a good to.
It's a collaboration. It's not just the schools. If this is, uh, you know, um, this is a town-wide, you know, project, um.
Uh, I mean, I can ask, uh, Chris or Jeff, if he has any thoughts. If not, maybe reach out to Lindsay.
Might.
Dear Mike.
Yeah, yeah, it would be, I think you, it couldn't hurt, let's put it that way.
And some of them, I think, I think Mike is on the liaison for the, the seniors and our task force.
Yeah. Um, and I think also maybe it's going for the seniors, like you say, and it's not one or the other. We're trying to, you know, do everything collaboratively.
They have the ear of the seniors from the task force right there. Of course, they're gonna be responsive. We have the ear of, I mean, the student. So I mean, I can't imagine going back to school like, oh, by the way, we're, we decided not to do. Like, I just can't imagine that conversation and how that would happen to our, to tell our students that, like, we just decided, um, you know, like with the town votes, we're not doing it in the town votes and that, let, let it be. Um, but I just don't see the school committee backing, backing down from this project. Okay, all right. I'll ask Jeff to see if anyone, if this is an idea that we're gonna be doing. And we would certainly like to see if any select board members. Okay, alright, I'll ask Jeff to see if anyone has a, this is an idea that we're gonna be doing and we would certainly like to see if any select board members are willing to join us. It's, you know, usually it's gonna be a Friday after morning, late morning or something. I think right now she normally does, yeah. Okay. Um, chair report, just. Thank you for joining your first official meeting. You are official, yes, thank you. I try to make sure you've been getting all the emails. Access to stuff.
And you're okay with Google?
I'm, oh, yeah.
Good. Have you looked through our drive?
Not yet.
I figured when I had a little bit of downtime, maybe this weekend or next week, I was gonna just sort of poke through and see everything. How everything's set up, where everything lives, make sure the access is okay.
Set up some time with you. We can do like a virtual, just like where do you kind of find things and. I mean, what might work better for you to like, so I I just star a whole bunch of things, you know, so which meetings are coming up, but however works better for you, but you can see like where. The different subcommittee folders are, um, the meeting folders, how you're looking for stuff.
Don't be afraid to, this is the girl right there, okay, so.
Yeah, so um, yeah. People responded. I know she's gonna be around a lot this summer as well. Yep, um, so. And I know that Beth sent out. Just a little while ago, the self evaluation, so.
You haven't seen that.
Nope, it just went through. Be like an hour, not even an hour ago. Um, it came through for Google, so you wouldn't get this, because I just sent it for the school committee, but we'll share it, um, the results. I sent it also because Beth still has access. So um, so we can get her feedback as well, so maybe we can um hopefully everyone can can get to it. I just copied last year's essentially and did a new one. But I think that seemed to work well. And then we can use the results of that to um. To do a workshop and July is not working out very nicely so far, um. So we can maybe think about, well, you might not even need to be there for our workshop. It'll maybe just be the schools. We can do our self evaluation and prioritize like think about goals.
Yeah, again, because the evalu- because of um Brian's um evaluation, it that'll help us with our goals, I think, this year too. You know, like it's a really good starting point.
Yeah, yeah, excellent, great. Um, and then there was just a quick uh blurb. We have a couple of students. Which I know that um Liz York and my Aria had shared um who are representing. Let's see, the Bay State Games, the soccer showcase, the. See, let's see what students we have here, um. Sienna Hasbeck, um Arabella, Victoria Caldwell, uh Erin um. Nick Nickervis, they're gonna be representing the northeast metro region for the girls soccer showcase Thursday. Saturday at the Gaden lawn in Pittsburgh. So um I can't make it, but I know that they did post it on social media in case anyone is able to go and cheer them on. It's a great event. Um. And just um, you know, hopefully everyone is still in the pool. It's been really crazy how hot it's been, sorry. Um, so. That's all I have. Uh, Maro, any updates from you?
Nope, not right now.
So are the are the next school committee meeting? Should we plan on doing those policies or or or, okay, alright, so. Okay, let's take before then, see. And maybe mature as well, just so.
I will definitely um mature, um, yeah, I did. Last week or the week before.
Well, isn't that you just need to, because it was like three, there were, there were a few. We were, we originally went up.
In our, at our last meeting.
Right.
Uh, we, we, Hillary and I um just briefly talked, um, trying to figure out, do we need to meet? Before to talk about them or can we just bring them and she she wanted to meet, so so we'll just, we'll meet. That's what she wanted to do, so um, so that's what, but I feel like if. We can't get together to to actually meet, then maybe we just need to just bring it and.
Yeah, yeah, we have some good momentum going, so let's, um, you know, I don't wanna hold it up for.
Right.
Um, because I think it would still need to go through like a a read anyway, so it's not like we would be voting, I think, on it, um. And and also maybe think about, once we get um. Everyone who's in the whatever some committees, the policy would be, we can um. Put forward some recommendations of what policies we wanna like focus on for the year as well.
Yeah, I know we used to. Well, we do have a list and so what we could do is at our next meeting. Just talk about the list of ones that we do have so that we can.
Yeah, we can say, like, if you, if there's ones that you all feel that or, yeah, I get what I hear, you your recommendations on. On that as well, um, okay, anything else?
No, I don't think so. Um, I I am. I do wanna just be, I know we're gonna do a workshop. On our goals, but I do wanna make sure that we're working on.
Right.
Brian's, like how that and getting that. Kind of, yeah.
We did do better this past year. But we did, but we're.
Better, but technically, we should already be talking about his goals.
Well, no, we needed to, so we did last time. We, so our our self evaluation also has some parts, like that we take away, like to have the goals, like with a community or whatever that might be, so I think it's almost like a parallel. Effort, um, I think we just need to get some dates. Setting like penciled in for you, so we can keep ourselves, get our feet to the coals on um, making sure we get, get things done um. For the school being, I think, November was, I think it was like September or whatever it was.
It was October.
Yeah, it was October. Yeah, we wanted.
It should be September.
Yeah.
So, um. I mean, you do have the list from.
Right, from the evaluation.
Evaluation that at least we could start with.
Absolutely. Okay, oh, that's good. Yeah, that was awesome, right, too, that you did that, so that really was a good. Um, beginning point and then we can see if, you know, how would every members wanna um. Spend on that, so. Um. Brian, do you? Um, want to set up? Monday check ins again, um, I don't know when what your schedule is for the summer, but I'm. I know it's gonna.
Um, yeah, after summer, it probably won't work for the next few weeks.
Yeah, yeah, just when after things get kind of a little bit worse.
Yeah, like mid August.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that might be good, um, okay. Might need to connect ad hoc a little bit between.
Absolutely.
Okay. Great. Um, Mary, did you have anything?
Um, no, um, as you heard from Chris's presentation, we just met um the school building meeting. On Monday and thank goodness there, we're having some savings already, which is a really nice thing, nice direction to be going in. So um I did, I had a question about the. What do, what is this? The main or the final report about um special education and that? Are we in a good place here? Yeah, we are, okay, because I. Yeah, right, and so I didn't really have a chance of it. We are in a really good place.
There was two reports that came in, um, this one was the, yeah, the special ed and then there was one about the EL um program. And.
They're both really good.
They both only had partial, like, yeah, like two things that were partially implemented. And so there is just an action plan from my understanding, basically.
But it's gonna be done by August, I think.
Right, there's a, obviously, there's a, um.
Simple, pretty, okay, perfect, yeah.
Yeah, you look at the the thing, it had like three things, but it was like, you know, twenty things that were, you know.
Right, it looked like it was all, but they were all, you know. Yes, just SE one, what is SE one? You know, that kind of thing, so, um, but that's it. That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, so maybe um at our. When that, after that goes um goes together, if you wanted to circulate them, I don't think we need to do any approving or anything. Very good for us to.
Yeah.
Know what's getting sent in for the plan for both of those. That'd be great. Um. Thank you, alright, and Alexis, did you have any questions or any thoughts? Well, alright.
Not yet.
Okay, um, I think then we'll go ahead and move on um.
Minutes.
Minutes, so without objection, hold on. If we had, we're two, yeah, but I wanna see they had, they had edits, right?
Yeah, three twenty seven, one had edits.
Three twenty seven. Alright, so without objection, I will move that we approve. The meeting minutes for March fourteen, twenty twenty four and March twenty seven, twenty twenty four with edits. Alright, those are approved.
And warrants are eighty through eighty three.
Eighty through eighty three, okay, so then without objection, I move that we accept approval warrants twenty four. Dash zero eight, zero dash zero eight one, dash zero eight. Two dash zero eight three. Alright.
And if the two warrants that went out today can be approved before Monday, that'd be great, so.
And Alexis is on that now, right? Alexis is on the warrants to prove them.
Okay, alright, um.
Tell, because it just says school.
How is that, how is.
Okay, how is that gonna work? Because right now those two were just added on to the. Cause they're twenty four warrants, so at some point we'll flip to twenty five.
Okay.
That's why they're. We'll have to get it out to town Monday.
Awesome, I will. Um, okay, then if. That is all, I will go ahead and motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Alright, we are good. Thank you very much.
Pleasure.
Yeah.